You know, we're all here, and we did it earlier.
Councilmember Beard.
Here.
Councilmember Bowie.
Here.
Councilmember Fawn.
Here.
Mayor Protam Jones.
Here.
And Mayor Nguyen.
Yes. All right, and welcome, Mr. Okereki. I'd like to ask you to offer us the invocation, and I'd like to ask Mr. Joe Pack to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance immediately following the invocation.
Okay, please prepare yourself according to your faith. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and for the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act in good character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. We ask that, as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love, that you bless and guide us tonight. Amen.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, please face our flag and also remember, tomorrow is Veterans Day, and we remember and pay respect to all the veterans. Let's begin.
For the citizens who did apply of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia's fans, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. It looks like we have several presentations tonight. Welcome, everybody. This is your council meeting.
Tonight, under item 4A, it's a presentation of Sister City of Anyang, Korea, honorary citizenship to Medal of Honor awardee Thibor Rubin, arranged by Dongwoo Joe Pack, former Garden Grove Planning Commissioner and two-term Garden Grove Sister City President on the eve of Veterans Day.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members and also city staff. Thank you very much for giving this opportunity to present the honorable citizenship of the city of Anyang, our sister city, since 1989, to a hero of American military history, Thibor Rubin. I know the city has recognized his heroism by naming the city library to his name, and he has been given a lot of recognition and honors throughout all, I don't know, about 10 years now. And I'd like to thank the city council for allowing me this opportunity to bring this great honor to Mr. Thibor Rubin. And he is not here tonight. However, his daughter Rosie is here with her relatives. And also from the Korean community, we have the Korean Veterans Association, headed by Mr. James Lee. And also the Orange County... Also, we have a sister city represented here by Vice President Kevin... Kevin Borlow, he's a teacher at the Garden Grove High School. And let me see. We also have a representative from the Orange County Korean Memorial Monument Committee, Dr. Oh and Mr. Ahn. At this time, I'd like to ask council representing the Republic of Korea, Minjae Hun, to go forward, and also Rosie. Yeah, Frank, Frank also, go forward. And at this time, I also like to ask James Lee to come forward with Dr. Ogu and Mr. Ahn, and also...
Gotcha. Kevin. So...
Since the microphone is over here, I'm gonna read it from here. It's a plaque of honorary citizenship. On behalf of the citizens of Anyang, I, as mayor of the city, am privileged to present this plaque to and hereby confer the title of honorary citizenship upon Thibor Rubin of the United States of America. In witness thereof, I have here to affix my signature and the seal of the city of Anyang. October 3, 2015, Mayor of Anyang City, Republic of Korea, Lee Pil-Won.
It's an honor. Well, I'm sorry my dad can't be here. He's older. Dad is suffering from heart problems. But my brother and I, we appreciate being honored. I love to be honored by the South Korean government. Thank you so much. Just wanted to say thank you to all the veterans and to our Veterans Day. Remember them every day. Because freedom is not free. And thank you to everyone that served and who will serve. And I know that the South Korean government is wonderful and loving the veterans, the veterans who have... who've worked with them during the Korean War and so on. So thank you very much. It's a big honor. And my dad thinks he's gonna hold down because... Thank you.
Rosie, I couldn't have put it any better. Thank you so much for your remarks. I just wish, you know, we had a wireless microphone so our audience at home can hear your remarks. And please do send our regards to your dad.
Thank you very much, our community members. Thank you for having us so far. Upon him and the family. Very much appreciated.
Thank you. All right. So we have a couple more, or no, three more.
Yes, we do. Item 4B is the Community Spotlight in recognition of 2015 Ms. Garden Grove and her court and Ms. Garden Grove Outstanding Teen and her court. And Mr. Okereki is gonna give the Community Spotlight.
Thank you. This evening, the Garden Grove City Council is pleased to shine the Community Spotlight on the 2014-2015 Ms. Garden Grove and Ms. Garden Grove's Outstanding Teen and their Courts of Honor. They have proudly served and represented the city since last October and passed on their crowns this past Saturday, November 7. As an official preliminary to the Ms. Garden Grove pageant, the Ms. Garden Grove pageant distributes over $5,000 in scholarships to local young ladies each year. In addition to performing in a talent competition, each contestant promotes their community service platform based on a current issue she feels is important. I would like to call forward each honorary present and give a brief introduction of each. We ask that each of you please stay up front after being called, so a group photo can be taken afterwards. We also ask the audience, if you can, please hold your applause till the end. Would Ms. Garden Grove 2015 Shannon Garland Power... I hope I said the last name right. Okay, please step forward. Shannon is pursuing her bachelor's degree in Communications at California State University, Long Beach, and she is a member of the dean's list. She was born in Czech Republic and has visited over six different countries and 14 states. Shannon currently works as a cast member at Disneyland, and she hopes to serve as a Disney ambassador one day. During her year of service, she focused on Camp Footprints, a nonprofit volunteer organization dedicated to providing one week of quality care, support, and love for disabled and at-risk children from the Southern California area. She was sponsored by Whitticombe Enterprises McDonald's. Representing the city and community with Ms. Garden Grove were her court members, Brittany Mayberry... Is she here? Emily Vu and Raquel Bullashawn. Brittany Mayberry is unable to be with us this evening as she is completing her graduate studies at Georgetown University in Washington DC. Emily Vu placed second runner-up to Ms. Garden Grove 2014. She is a graduate of Crystal Cathedral High School and is currently a Vocal Performance major at Golden West College. Emily was sponsored by Farmers and Merchant Bank. Raquel placed third runner-up to Ms. Garden Grove 2015. She is a recent graduate of California State University at Long Beach with a bachelor's degree, a Bachelor's of Arts degree in English. She plans to continue her education by obtaining a master's degree and aspires to become an English professor. She was sponsored by Garden Grove Elks Lodge, number 1952. In addition to Ms. Garden Grove and her court, the city council would like to recognize Garden Grove's Outstanding Teen 2015 and Teen Princesses. Would Ms. Garden Grove Outstanding Teen 2015 Josie? Please, please come forward. Okay, great. Josie is currently a senior at Los Alamos High School and maintains a 5.0 GPA. She has completed over 1,000 hours of community service and is a recipient of the president's Volunteer Service Award. Josie's platform is one that she lives with every day. She was diagnosed with lupus at the age of 15. This past year, she served as an advocate and national spokesperson for the Lupus Foundation of America. She filmed their public service announcement and is a featured member of their national campaign. Her face can be seen on billboards across the country. Next, would Teen Princesses Jenna Tower and Selena Valdez, please come forward. Jenna placed first runner-up to Garden Grove's Outstanding Teen. She is a junior at Pacific High School and a member of the 2015 USA National Champion Dance Team. She was sponsored by Garden Grove Body Shop. Last Saturday, at the 13th Annual Outstanding Teen Pageant, Jenna won the Ms. Garden Grove's Outstanding Teen 2016 title with her upbeat roller skating routine called Footloose. Selena Valdez placed second runner-up to Garden Grove's Outstanding Teen, and she is a senior at Pacific High School. She is also a member of the 2015 USA National Champion Dance Team. She was sponsored by Orange County Opto-Meology. Over the past year, Ms. Garden Grove and Ms. Garden Grove's Outstanding Teen, along with their court, have participated in a variety of community events and service projects. These appearances included the Christmas tree lighting celebration, Strawberry Festival, and the Garden Grove Community Foundation's Summer Concert Series. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present the Ms. Garden Grove Scholarship Pageant outgoing title holders and their courts with certificates and mementos in recognition of their volunteerism in the community during their 2015 reign. The city council wishes you the best and hopes that your aspirations continue to lead you to recognized success. Congratulations, you all.
Josie and I are gonna say something really quickly. So, we were crowned last October, and it's been a little over a year now, and we just crowned our successors on Saturday. So technically, we are no longer your representatives for the city, but we left you in very good hands with your new title holders. I just wanna say thank you to the mayor and city council members. You all have been so nice, and you've remembered who we are every time we see you, and you're just so great just with this program. And it's wonderful to see a city that supports their local pageant. It's been an amazing time getting to represent Garden Grove at the Strawberry Festival and at Miss California and just a bunch of city events. And I am truly thankful and blessed, and I absolutely love this city. And though I won't be representing the city anymore, I can't wait to experience all of the wonderful things Garden Grove has to offer for years to come. So thank you.
Thank you.
Just a little bit of an echo of what Shannon said. Just thank you guys so much for opening up your city to us as title holders for the year. We've absolutely loved all the events we were able to go to and all the amazing people, council members, mayor, we were able to meet. Thank you just for being there for us and supporting us and coming to our events and really making this a great year for us. So thank you.
Thank you. You've all represented our city very well, and we definitely appreciate all the work that you've done. It's a lot of hard work and dedication and a lot of smarts that goes into what they do. So thank you. All right, let's move on to a couple more.
Yes, we do. Tonight, item 4C is a recognition of Jamie Marseille for being the first female double amputee to run a full 26.2-mile marathon.
Yeah, the Garden Grove City Council is proud to recognize Jamie Marseille for being the first female double amputee to run a full 26.2-mile marathon. Jamie, a mother of two and a kindergarten teacher at Eisenhower Elementary School, completed the Chicago Marathon on October 11 with an official time of 6 hours, 27 minutes, and 1 second. She is the first female double amputee to run the full 26.2-mile marathon, and she is now qualified for April's Boston Marathon.
Awesome. Amazing.
There's more, there's more to come. According to Jamie, running the Chicago Marathon showed her that nothing is impossible, that age is just a number. Turning 47, she decided the best way to celebrate life was to be active. She turned to running after watching the Paralympics. Jamie was a member of the United States Paralympic team for three years. She completed four half marathons and decided to push herself even further by signing up for a full marathon. Jamie stated, "I've learned that it's all mental. You can push your body to amazing heights." At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present Jamie with a gift of recognition for an outstanding achievement and teaching her students that the world is their oyster, and they can achieve anything they want to with hard work. Congratulations, Jamie.
I'll make it real brief, but the mayor did ask me to say a few words, so I don't wanna say no to the mayor. But I wanna thank everyone on the city council and the city of Garden Grove for asking me here tonight to recognize my accomplishment. I've always said that the brain is your biggest muscle in your body, because what you have is what you wanna do with it, meaning that if my brain tells me I'm gonna run a marathon, with or without legs, I'm gonna run that marathon. And that's what I've really tried to focus on the last 25 years since my accident. And working in Garden Grove, I'm a kindergarten teacher in Eisenhower Elementary. I feel very blessed to share my story with all my students and to watch the growth and progression as they continue their journey of life. So thank you, everyone, for coming tonight, and thank you, city of Garden Grove, for recognizing my accomplishment.
Thank you. Good luck in Boston.
I will put up my plaque and share my word with everyone at my school. So thanks again.
All right. Thank you. Great job. Kids are so proud of mom, too. All right. Mr. Pomeroy.
Are we ready? Okay. The next Community Spotlight, and last but not least tonight, is recognition of Albert Ayala for his past service to our country. And Mr. Okereki is gonna give the spotlight.
The Garden Grove City Council would like to recognize Albert Ayala for his past service to our great country. Would Albert Ayala please come forward? A Garden Grove resident, Albert served our country in three wars: World War II, the Korean Conflict, and the Vietnam War. He served as a bomber pilot, trained pilot cadets, and served three tours with the United States Army. For his service, he received distinctions and commendations, including the Purple Heart, Distinguished Cross, and Good Conduct Medal. After his military career, Albert served in law enforcement for 30 years. He holds a Bachelor's of Arts degree in psychology as well as two master's degrees. At this time, the city council, mayor and city council would like to present Albert with a gift of appreciation for his faithful service to the United States of America. Thank you so much, sir. Congratulations.
Mr. Mayor and council members, I'm so thankful to be here today along with my wife, who is constantly my inspiration. We had the privilege of serving the city for a number of years as volunteers and advocates. We love Main Street, for one thing. We danced in Main Street for approximately six, seven years. Every Friday after Friday, we did. We just love Garden Grove. We just recently traveled through Europe and Mediterranean, and it seemed like every time we had a minute, we talked about, "I wonder what they're doing in Garden Grove." And it's always, it's a pleasure to be back home, and it's a pleasure to enjoy from time to time all the wonderful things that take place in this city. We've tried... My wife and I looked in different cities around Orange County. I was born in Orange County, and we looked at different cities. A lot of times, we're disappointed because things aren't exactly right, but we come back to a wonderful city of Garden Grove. We love Garden Grove, and we enjoy and love historic Main Street, and we will continue working for that part of the city, especially the functions of our government. And we will always, the city will always have our support. My wife and I are constantly thinking of Garden Grove, and we will do everything we can to continue improving our city, and we thank each one of you for the work you're doing. And once again, we love Garden Grove. We continue to participate in whatever we can, and we thank you so much. We thank you for this presentation and this gift of love, really. It's really a gift of love. It's not a... We've done such a wonderful thing, but this is an expression that comes from your heart and the city of Garden Grove, and I thank you, and I'm sure my wife just thanks you the same way. Thank you again.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your service. Okay. I think... Thank you. Thank you for your service, sir. You know, I think we should take a quick... Well, I... What do you think, council? No straw pull, a quick recess? No? Okay, let's start. Let's go through... We're gonna convene the successor agency and start with the comments here. Maureen Blackman, followed by Charles Mitchell, and then Stephanie Klopstein, and then Josh McIntosh. All right.
Hello, Mayor, council, staff. I'm just gonna reiterate an email that I sent to council today about tonight's appointment to the Planning Commission. What my sentiments are is that the advantage to appointing an individual once the commissioners are in place is that you get to see the gaps that you need to fill. So you can look at your personalities as opposed to just drawing a deck and pulling the names out. You get to see where you really need to fill in that gap. So the current council, if you ask me, has a need for an industry-heavy individual. So that the ideal candidate would have command of the construction or development trades, and that individual would have knowledge or understanding of issues that are facing our community. They would also have a good grasp on local ordinances and laws. Of course, that candidate would also be well-spoken, a good listener, and possess an analytical mind. Garden Grove now has key players in place, and we're at a time that we can move forward. An appointee that requires a long learning curve would slow our planning process down. We have been slowed down long enough, and it's time to let our horses out of the barn and get some industry in the queue. And I look forward to tonight's appointment. Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. When I was on the grand jury, we had a foreman who was a retired Marine Colonel. We became good friends. And one day, he came over to our house for a visit. Well, I have a doorbell that is programmable. There's about a dozen different tunes that can be put into that. Well, when he arrived at the door, he pushed the button, and he heard the first few bars of the Marine Anthem. Needless to say, he was pleased and surprised. When he came in, he said, "I'm a bit surprised. I thought you were in the Army." I said, "Yes, I was." But it doesn't matter what branch we served in or whether we served at all. The Marines belong to all of us.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. As you know, I was very vocal back in September when Vector Control was planning to use aerial spraying as a method to combat West Nile virus. As of this October, the meeting that was just held, it was made known that they did receive a waiver granting entrance to Disneyland's No-Fly Zone, and I believe that they will be voting on aerial spraying for the 2016 mosquito season this month. At the October meeting, a staff member from Vector Control mocked the concerned residents of Orange County who opposed the spraying, calling people "Google University graduates" is not only immature name-calling, but to me, it shows how little respect Vector has for a difference of opinion. I plan to attend the meeting on November 19th at 3:00 p.m., and if you are at all concerned or interested in learning what Vector has planned for 2016, I encourage you to come as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh McIntosh.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and residents of Garden Grove. I'd like to give my own personal thanks to Mr. Ayala, and thank you for your service, and to all of our veterans here, Councilman Fawn included. In November 2012, we made a proclamation that we were Orange County's first Purple Heart city, and I sit on a commission where we work with the homeless and the low-income people of this city. I would certainly like to see us earn this Purple Heart city recognition by taking better care of our veterans. I do not know of any program right now in our city, city function or supported, that is doing much to support our veterans, and I think that calling ourselves a Purple Heart city requires that we actually take action and take care of our veterans. I'd like to see some more action on that. Perhaps Councilman Fawn would lead the way, as a veteran himself, into establishing some policies for our city and taking action. Again, thank you to all our veterans. We have, something really sad happened last week. Sunday, I was making a donation at the Garden Grove Historical Society, and our president, Terry, who was just honored here a couple weeks ago, informed me that residence at 12381 Nelson Street was being demolished. It was not protected by the Mills Act, something that I brought to this council last go-around. 12381 Nelson Street is a home over 100 years old. It was home to our original blacksmith of the village of Garden Grove. It is now a pile of rubble, soon to be four townhomes. It's the exact situation I hope to prevent happening here. In 50 years, we probably won't have one historical structure left if we continue to bulldoze and turn everything into a townhome or an apartment complex. I don't know how much that matters to you folks, but it does matter to me quite a bit. Last but not least, I would like to speak about item 7A, the parking variance at 1100 and 1102 Garden Grove Boulevard, where we have arguably one of the worst traffic locations in this city, Main Street and Garden Grove Boulevard. A lot of people like our Costco. A lot of people avoid it like the plague, as it's home to some of the worst traffic and frustrations one can offer. We have a restaurant that is now asking for a variance of 71 parking spots below what is required for our city, for our code. I don't think that we should be allowing them to get away with that. I don't think that it's, that by lessening 71 parking spots, we're going to be doing anyone a favor. I believe we're going to be adding to the frustration and the nightmare known as the Garden Grove Costco. Now, it's a great business, great prices, everyone loves their pizza and whatnot, but 71 parking spots, that's a heck of a lot. So, this resident is against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to recess the city council and conduct a successor agency business.
Thank you, Mayor. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll for the successor agency?
Member Bowie. Member Bowie?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Yes.
Member Fawn?
Here.
Vice Chair Beard?
Here.
And Chair Jones?
Here. We have consent items just received and filed in minutes, and approval of the warrants. Do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Call the vote.
Member Bowie?
Yes.
Member Nguyen?
Aye.
Member Fawn?
Yes.
Vice Chair Beard?
Yes.
And Chair Jones?
Yes. We have no hearings, we have no items for consideration, so any matters from agency members? Seeing none, we will adjourn back to City Council.
Great, thank you. Rest of the consent items here?
Consent items 6A through 6E will be acted on simultaneously with one motion unless separate discussion interaction is requested by council member.
Do you have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, so, we have a unique item here, the 6B, that's adoption of a resolution establishing the city's transparency and city government webpage, open government. Very exciting. This is the first time that we've done this, where citizens will now be able to see your tax dollars and how the city uses it on the website. So, I'm super excited about this, and let's vote.
All right. Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawn?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Jones?
Yes.
And Mayor Nguyen?
Aye.
Looks like we have a public hearing tonight?
We do have a public hearing item, and the motion to approve will include the adoption of the resolution unless otherwise indicated. And this is an appeal of the Garden Grove Planning Commission's approval of variance number V-011-2015 regarding a parking variance at 11100 and 11102 Garden Grove Boulevard. Garden Grove and Carl Hill and Chris Chung are here from the Community Development Department to give you your presentation.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the City Council.
There is a video. Hello? Okay. Good evening, Honorable Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. The subject site at 11100 and 11102 Garden Grove Boulevard is developed with an existing approximately 30,000-square-foot building. The existing 30,000-square-foot building in its entirety was previously occupied by an Office Depot retail store. To the west of the subject site is an existing fast-food drive-through eating establishment, Del Taco, and an existing large retail store, Costco Wholesale. A driveway runs along the westerly propellant of the subject site, which provides reciprocal access and parking to Del Taco and Costco Wholesale. The subject site, along with the Costco and Del Taco sites, are under an existing reciprocal easement agreement for parking and access. In April of 2015, a demising wall was constructed, splitting the existing 30,000-square-foot Office Depot tenant space into a 15,700-square-foot tenant space and a 14,300-square-foot tenant space. Office Depot is now occupying the 15,700-square-foot space. The applicant initially submitted a proposal to improve and occupy the newly-created 14,300 square-foot tenant space with a restaurant use, East Seafood Buffet. Prior to the subdivision of the existing 30,000-square-foot space, the code required the existing Office Depot retail store to provide a minimum of 150 parking spaces. The existing site provides a total of 152 total parking spaces, which is a surplus of two parking spaces. Following the subdivision of the existing 30,000-square-foot tenant space into two tenant spaces, the newly-created 15,700-square-foot space and, I'm sorry, the 15,700-square-foot Office Depot tenant space requires a minimum of 79 parking spaces. For the proposed East Seafood Buffet restaurant, which would occupy the newly-created 14,300 square-foot space, the code requires a minimum of 143 parking spaces. Thus, the total number, minimum number of required parking spaces for both uses is 222. Based on the existing 152 parking spaces currently available on site, the proposed development is initially proposed was deficient by 71 parking spaces, equal to a 32% reduction. Staff expressed concerns relating to parking and traffic impacts resulting from the proposed development. Additionally, staff recommended to the applicant that they reach out to the private parties under the reciprocal easement agreement, present the proposal, and obtain their approval. In response to staff's comments and as a supplemental to their initial proposal, the applicant subsequently submitted a parking demand analysis report and a traffic impact study, prepared by a licensed traffic engineer, substantiating that, one, there will be sufficient parking available for the proposed Office Depot retail store and the restaurant use, based on the projected demand, and, two, there will be no significant impacts to traffic in nearby areas. However, no indication or written verification was provided, ensuring that the adjoining property owners under the REA were in support of that project. It should be noted that the similar projects that involve multiple properties, property owners, and an REA, it is typical practice for staff to communicate to the applicant that it is recommended that they obtain the other private party's support and approval for their project prior to submission of a land use application. The intent of this practice is to address any issues or concerns other private parties under the REA may have regarding an applicant's proposal. Despite the apparent lack of support from the other private parties under the REA, the applicant submitted a variance application requesting approval to deviate from the minimum number of required parking spaces in order to allow the operation of the proposed restaurant in conjunction with the downsized Office Depot retail tenant on this subject property. Variance number V-011-2015 was first heard for the first time by the Planning Commission on June 18th, 2015. Prior to that hearing, Costco Wholesale sent a letter to the city dated June 16th, 2015, opposing the variance on the basis that the proposed reduction of parking would adversely affect Costco Wholesale's business operations and would violate the reciprocal easement agreement that had been entered into between the former owner of the Office Depot property with Costco Wholesale and the former redevelopment agency on June 11th, 1996. The Del Taco parcel is part of this REA. The applicant requested to continue variance number V-011-2015 to the July 16th, 2015 Planning Commission meeting in order to work with the adjacent property owners and address their concerns. The Planning Commission held a continued public hearing on June, I'm sorry, July 16th, 2015. At the public hearing, a representative from Costco Wholesale appeared and submitted a letter opposing the requested variance. Following conclusion of the public hearing, the Planning Commission voted to direct staff to prepare a resolution of denial of the requested variance for its consideration at the August 6th, 2015 meeting, based on the inability of the commission to make the following required finding for approval of a variance. The granting of the requested variance will not be materially detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to the property or improvements in such vicinity and zone in which the property is located. The commission's inability to make the above required finding for approval of the requested variance was based on the reasons stated by Costco Wholesale and the reasons articulated by the planning commissioners at the meeting. Subsequent to the July 16th meeting, the applicant's representative provided staff with additional information and conditions the applicant would be willing to accept if the Planning Commission would reconsider its decision to deny the variance request. Staff was also advised that the applicant and Costco Wholesale were engaged in negotiations that could potentially result in Costco Wholesale retracting its opposition. At the August 6th, 2015 Planning Commission meeting, the staff presented the commission with a proposed resolution of denial per the commission's July 16th, 2015 direction, and the Planning Commission was advised that the applicant was requesting a continuance so that the public hearing could be reopened, and additional information and/or a revised proposal addressing the previously raised concerns could be considered. Following discussion, the Planning Commission voted to continue the case to a re-notice date of the September 3rd, 2015 Planning Commission meeting in order to consider a revised proposal in regard to safety and parking concerns. Staff subsequently noticed a new public hearing for September 3rd, 2015. At the September 3rd, 2015 Planning Commission meeting, staff presented the commission with a revised site plan submitted by the applicant. In summary, the initial proposed parking deficiency had been reduced from a 32% reduction in parking to a 19.8% reduction in parking through the addition of 26 new parking spaces. Additionally, to further address concerns about a shortage of parking and safety in the shopping center, the applicant also agreed to additional conditions of approval requiring to implement valet parking for the restaurant used during peak usage, and to improve pedestrian safety through the installation of new pedestrian crossing signage and a flashing stop sign on site. The applicant representative represented that Costco Wholesale, who objected to the initial variance request, may be in positions to support the applicant's revised variance request. Furthermore, the applicant represented that he had been in contact with Del Taco and that all involved parties, the applicant, Costco Wholesale, and Del Taco, had been working together towards a resolution and approval of an amendment to their REA, which would allow the operation of the proposed buffet restaurant per their private agreement. Finally, the applicant noted to the Planning Commission that an agreement in writing was in place between the applicant and Costco Wholesale, ensuring that an amendment to the REA would be finalized and approved by all involved private parties prior to moving forward with the tenant improvement for the proposed East Seafood Buffet restaurant. Following discussion, the Planning Commission voted 3-2 to approve variance number V-011-2015. Following the Planning Commission's approval of V-011-2015, it came to staff's attention that the property owner for the Del Taco site indicated not receiving a public notice for the Del Taco site, I'm sorry, and thereby was unable to provide testimony on the matter. Due to this, including other reasons stated, in a letter submitted to the city, the property owner and his representative of the Del Taco business filed an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of the variance. The appellant is requesting that the City Council reconsider the Planning Commission's approval and instead deny the requested variance. In regards to noticing of the Planning Commission public hearings, our records indicate that more than one mailing was sent to the property owner's address for the Del Taco site, and our sources for address location and verification affirm that the mailing address on file was to be considered valid. In addition, correspondence addressed from the property owner for the Del Taco property was found to be the same as our records. On November 2nd, 2015, the appellant submitted an additional letter on behalf of Del Taco, which spoke in support of the appeal to reverse the Planning Commission's approval of the parking variance. The letter expresses opposition to variance number V-011-2015, and also states that Del Taco was never contacted by the applicant to discuss the requested variance prior to the September 3rd, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. Echoing the appellant's position, Del Taco is requesting that the City Council reconsider the Planning Commission's approval and instead deny the requested variance. On November 10th, 2015, Costco Wholesale submitted a letter commenting on the subject appeal. The letter notes that on August 14th, 2015, Costco and Emerald Square, the owner of the Office Depot parcel, executed a letter of intent settling forth, settling forth, I'm sorry, setting forth terms upon which Costco would support the subject variance. One such condition in the letter was that Emerald Square would obtain approval from the property owner of the Del Taco parcel, Hennessy Group, to allow an exception to the REA parking requirements for the proposed restaurant. Additionally, the letter notes that Emerald Square had sent Costco a letter promising it would not move forward with the project without obtaining said approval from Hennessy Group. The letter notes that because the applicant has not obtained the requisite approval from Hennessy Group, Costco Wholesale is requesting that the City Council reverse the Planning Commission's decision to approve the variance, absent approval from Hennessy Group. Finally, the letter states that Costco would be willing to reevaluate the proposal, should the applicant obtain Hennessy Group's approval, and in accordance with the terms discussed prior. Therefore, it is recommended that the City Council conduct a public hearing, consider all testimonies and written record, and either, one, adopt the attached resolution approving the appeal submitted by Mike Hennessy, Hennessy Group, and overturning the Planning Commission's decision to approve variance number V-011-2015 regarding a parking variance at 11100 and 11102 Garden Grove Boulevard, Garden Grove, thereby denying V-011-2015 in full, or adopt the attached resolution denying the appeal submitted by Mike Hennessy, Hennessy Group, and uphold the Planning Commission's decision to approve variance number V-011-2015 regarding a parking variance at 11100 and 11102 Garden Grove Boulevard, Garden Grove, thereby denying V-011-2015 in full, or adopt the attached resolution denying the appeal submitted by Mike Hennessy, Hennessy Group, and uphold the Planning Commission's decision to approve variance number V-011-2015 regarding a parking variance at 11100 and 11102 Garden Grove settling forth, I'm sorry, setting forth terms upon which Costco would support the subject variance. One such condition in the letter was that Emerald Square would obtain approval from the property owner of the Del Taco parcel, Hennessy Group, to allow an exception to the REA parking requirements for the proposed restaurant. Additional, the letter notes that Emerald Square has, had sent Costco a letter promising it would not move forward with the project without obtaining said approval from Hennessy Group. The letter notes that because the applicant has not obtained the requisite approval from Hennessy Group, Costco Wholesale is requesting that the city council reverse the Planning Commission's decision to approve the variance, absent approval from Hennessy Group. Finally, the letter states that Costco would be willing to reevaluate the proposal should the applicant obtain Hennessy Group's approval, and in accordance with the terms discussed prior. Therefore, it is recommended that the city council conduct a public hearing, consider all testimonies and written record, and either, one, adopt the attached resolution approving the appeal submitted by Mike Hennessy, Hennessy Group, and overturning the Planning Commission's decision to approve variance number V dash zero one one dash twenty fifteen regarding a parking variance at one 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 zero zero and one 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 zero two Garden Grove Boulevard, Garden Grove, thereby denying V dash zero one one dash twenty fifteen in full, or adopt the attached resolution denying the appeal submitted by Mike Hennessy, Hennessy Group, and uphold the Planning Commission's decision to approve variance number V dash zero one one dash twenty fifteen regarding a parking variance at one 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 zero zero and one 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 zero two Garden Grove Boulevard, Garden Grove, or provide further direction to staff. This concludes staff's report. The city attorney along with staff are available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chung. So, we're gonna open up the public hearing right now, and we have several folks that want to speak. Graham Alcorn. Following Mr. Alcorn will be Michael Hennessy and then Kevin Randolph.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Graham Alcorn, and staff, of course, sorry. My name is Graham Alcorn with Red Mountain Group, and we're located at one, two, three, four East Seventeenth Street in Santa Ana, California. Chris, that was a great summation. I mean, as you can see from Chris's breakdown of the process through Planning Commission to appear tonight, there's been a tremendous amount of work and effort and money spent by a lot of people on this. I don't think that the ship has sailed on this in that I think that there's still work to be done, and I think that there are still some discussions and dealing with some of the issues on the property for, that we can still, we still have time to work through, would like to ask for time to work through. So what I respectfully request is that we continue the council hearing on this sometime in January. I don't know what the calendar looks like, but that's what I'd respectfully request from the council tonight. We just think there's a lot of work to be done still, as you can see by the lineage of things that we've worked on through this process. And if you have any questions, I'm available.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Michael Hennessy?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Michael Hennessy, Hennessy Group. Sixteen years ago, my wife and I bought the property out there that you see Del Taco in now. It's a vacant piece of property at a time in our lives. My wife was pregnant with our first child, and it was the biggest investment in our lives. We built the site, we put in Del Taco, and we've kept it for the last sixteen years. And I can tell you that over those sixteen years, Garden Grove has done nothing but get better. It has been a great investment. We are so proud and so pleased with our investment in Garden Grove. My daughter's sophomore in high school now, and someday I'd like to keep this property another thirty, forty, fifty years and leave it to her and her brothers when I'm gone. The applicant bought the property next door, and the applicant wants to intensify the use of the property. And when you intensify the use of the property, we've already got a tight parking in that property right now. When you intensify the use, what it does, it drives parking from his site to our site. And when parking gets driven to our site and people can't park and can't use their site efficiently, they don't use our business, and that drives down the value of that business, and that drives down the value of our property. It's a zero-sum game, and parking and valuation are immutable. They go together. If you don't have adequate parking, the site's simply worth less. So the sum of the equation is, the applicant wants to increase the value of his property by taking the value of our property. That's the way we see it. Parking out there is difficult now. If this project goes through, it's a disaster. I took the time to listen to Planning Commission recording, and in that recording, there are a couple of segments, and I've marked the times down, I can give them to you, where the applicant says that they are, I think I get this right, are in contact with Del Taco, and the three parties are working together. That is factually incorrect. That is false. They hadn't spoken to me, and they hadn't spoken to Del Taco. And if they had spoke to me, I would have told them what I'm telling you here tonight, that it's a bad idea, it's damaging to our property, and we're not gonna agree to it. We're simply just not gonna agree to it. What they're asking is to make money by taking our parking, and we're simply not gonna agree to that. I've lived with the parking that's out there for the last sixteen years. All I'm asking is that the applicant, who bought property rights like I did, live with the same rights that I lived with, that they simply live with what they bought. I want to make sure that I'm clear. I'm not asking you to punish the applicant, any more than I'm being punished by living with the parking standards that I bought. I'm simply asking that you be fair and ask the applicant to live with what he bought, and I'll live with what I bought. And if they so desire, they can go out and get a tenant that is within, that will, that will function within the code and the parking allowed. You know, we've been at this for four meetings now, and it is expensive, and it's been expensive for me to file this variance. And what we're asking tonight is that we end this. It's been through four meetings. It's not gonna change anything. There's a limited amount of parking, and what we would ask you to do is have the applicant go get a tenant that works within the space he purchased and live out there in peace. I've lived next door to Office Depot for sixteen years. We never had an issue. And so to come out here and have to do this now is a shame, but I am pleased to be part of this community, and I would ask you to overturn this variance. Thank you very much.
Kevin Randolph?
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Kevin Randolph, and I'm legal counsel to the Hennessy Group. It's a pleasure to be able to address you this evening. Before launching into my legal points of view, let me respond to the applicant's request for a continuance. We would love nothing better than to be good neighbors, or certainly, as Mr. Hennessy pointed out, excuse me, not interested in punishing or denying any one of the benefits of the property which they bought. If this were a different kind of problem, it might be worthwhile to try and talk about it. At this point in time, given the nature of this problem, as Mike said, it's a net zero-sum game. There simply is not enough parking out there, and we have not been able to consider, or be able to fathom, any possible alternative, any compromise, any settlement that would change that fact. There's just simply is a physical limit on the number of spaces. If you increase the density, increase the use, you shrink the parking spaces, you make them less attractive for people to park on their parcel, they simply are going to do what's most convenient, and that's park in the Del Taco parcel. It's just, it's just human nature. So as much as we would like to be good neighbors, as much as we would like to continue the dialogue that we really never, never was, we really don't see a purpose to it, and so we would not support the continuance, as comes up in your discussions later. And now to the boring legal parts. As I mentioned, I'm legal counsel and the author of those two letters that you have in your, in your agenda package, and I'd like to refer to and make part of your record. I don't, not going to bore you to death and recapitulate all the points made in my letter. We do stand on them. I want to incorporate all the objections, all the legal objections for the record that we've made for you, but I'd like to focus on a couple of points. Number one, your Planning Commission got it right on July sixteenth. They looked at this and they said, here's the problem, we can't make this finding. We have, as you know, the Planning Commission has to be able to make certain affirmative findings, and if they're not able to do that, they can't approve the variance. One of the findings is, of course, that there's no materially detrimental impact to adjoining properties. In this case, the Planning Commission on July sixteenth determined that there was and directed staff to bring back a request for denial, or, excuse me, a resolution for denial. We think that was right. We think their, their analysis was spot-on, and although the applicant came back and tried to save the variance, it doesn't work for a couple of reasons. Number one, the mitigation measures, and let me point out, we have, we have the, Mr. Hennessy's traffic engineer in the audience, if you have any particular questions, Mr. Pirazata. But those mitigation measures, they're wonderful, they sound good, they're, they're great eyewash, but functionally shrinking parking spaces, and allow me to point out that your code permits only twenty percent maximum compact spaces. The number of spaces proposed by the applicant's revised site plan is twenty-six percent. So we're not even sure how we can, we can get under the code. But putting that aside, even assuming compact spaces, the percentage was correct, they don't work, nor in a valet service. That sounds great, but does it really work for this kind of business? We don't think so, and we think the traffic engineer can, will support that if you have questions. But equally important is, let's look at the fact that the Planning Commission was able to make that finding because they believed, they were led to believe, that the applicant had the support of the adjoining property owners. That just wasn't true. Costco, who originally conditionally supported or wasn't going to get in the way of the variance, they, their, their support, for lack of a better word, was conditioned on the fact that the applicant obtained Del Taco's approval. That didn't occur. Costco has withdrawn its report. They feel the same way we do about it. It's a bad idea. Similarly, the Del Taco's support was never obtained. They, they oppose this as the most, as the closest business to that parking lot that the applicant proposes to shrink, make smaller. Del Taco is the parcel that's gonna be affected the most. Once again, we, we just don't see a reason to continue, to continue this on. We would respectfully request that the Planning Commission, or excuse me, the city council reverse the Planning Commission's approval of the variance and put an end to this now and allow the applicant to go find a business that more appropriately fits within their site. And again, thank you for your time and be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Gil Cosine?
Good evening, Mayor, Wyman, and Council members. My name is Gil Cosine. I'm an assistant store manager with Costco Wholesale over here in Garden Grove on one one zero 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 Garden Grove Boulevard. And just wanted to reiterate what was, what was sent by our corporate counsel on November tenth, that we're asking the city council to reverse the Planning Commission decision, issue the variance, because they didn't get the approval from Hennessy, as outlined herein. You know, our, our stance in this was, in the beginning, losing parking spaces would not be good for our business. It is a very heavily congested parking area already. Deal with that on a consistent basis in my daily duties, dealing with member concerns and whatnot. The, if you, if you look at, excuse me, guys, many reviews on Yelp and the like, there's several instances where it addresses the issue of the parking in Costco. In the, in the midst of all this, we changed our mind. We said, you know, we're gonna try to be good neighbors, and if the three of us can decide what's best for the three of us, that we would be willing to, to change our stance on opposing the project, basically. That hasn't happened, as is outlined in the letter from our corporate counsel, is that the Red Mountain Group has not, it lived up to their end. And so at this point in time, we would like this, this issue to be resolved and not move forward from this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Bixler?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. My name is Mark Bixler. I'm regional vice president for Del Taco, supervise about a hundred restaurants in Southern California, in Orange County. This particular store, as you heard from several other gentlemen, is just the parking issue is just, it's, it's really, I don't even know how to say the words, out of the hundred restaurants that I supervise, is probably one of the worst, most congested. Now, it's a good thing and a bad thing, but for us being Del Taco at the corner of fast food, it's a bad thing if more people come over and park on our side and, and go inside a restaurant or go someplace and don't come in to eat. We have very limited parking in front of our stalls, so just a couple of things I wanted to say is that no one, I have not talked to anyone from Office Depot or the seafood place at all, no one in my corporate office has talked to any of them. So we would ask also that you would just turn this variance over tonight and end it. No one's talked to us in good faith, and we really don't want to give up any parking spaces. As you know, if you've been there at Christmas time, there's no place to park. You might circle the parking lot five times before you find someplace to park, so. Any questions? It's really all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Charles Mitchell?
On several occasions, I've gone to shop at Costco or at Office Depot, and my usual route is to go up Euclid to Century and take Century to one of the driveways that are at the back of the Costco building. Now, if I'm going to Costco, I can drive through the congestion trying to get to the main parking lot at the front of the store, or I can park in one of the many empty parking spaces along Century. Nobody likes to park a long ways away and walk all the way to the entrance, but I never see any cars parked back there on any of my occasions on visiting the stores. When I go through the back parking lot to visit Office Depot, I notice there is a large parking lot at the back of that building, and again, totally empty. As a matter of fact, that's one of the few places available for our fire department to use their equipment and to conduct drills and train new members of the fire department, because there's enough room back there to park their rigs and go ahead and do the training. But I question whether there's a need for additional parking if they're going to put in a restaurant on that half of the Office Depot building, because there's so many spaces in the back that are still available and not being used. So I think that deserves some consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, colleagues, for staff, and discussion, deliberation?
So these parking spaces that is required, is that because of our code requirements, or why is it that the Emerald Group has to put in this petition for greater parking
The code requires a minimum of one parking space per one hundred square feet of gross floor area, so essentially, from a retail to a restaurant use, it doubles the parking requirement.
I look at the parking map between the September and the previous Planning Commission meeting, and I noticed that in the back, they increased, they, you know, they draw some additional parking in the area that wasn't, you know, parking before. Besides that, and that seemed to add, like, how many spots like that in that area? The, the map was so small and difficult to read, but, so how many, how many parking did they create in the back?
Yes, twenty-six extra parking stalls at the rear.
In the rear? For that addition or that total in the rear?
Total in the rear.
How many additional parking did they create?
Twenty-six total.
Okay, let me, let me rephrase that question. If you take a look at the, the map, the parking map for the September Planning Commission meeting, now, if you compare that to the previous parking map, the previous parking map, there are two sections, and the section on the east side was empty. There wasn't, it was, there was no scribe for those parking. So it's, it's obvious that they, they draw some more, some more parking in that empty space, and I don't count, but it doesn't seem to add up to twenty-six.
I'm sorry, Mr. Senator, your question, there's three additional parking spaces at the front and then twenty-three additional at the rear.
Okay, I'm, I'm not asking that, so, so listen to my question. For those in the rear, how many additional in the rear?
Additional from what was originally approved?
Comparing to the one in, in, in July?
They added twenty-six, correct? They just, they added 26, correct? Yeah, they, they added 23 in the back and three in the front. So the, the second meeting, they'd come back with 23 more in the, in the rear parking area.
I see.
The existing proposal did not have any change to the existing site plan.
Now, when they, when they tried to create more parking lot, do they reduce the number of, uh, do they increase the number of compact parking like, like they claimed from 2026? In order to, to create more parking?
The, they reduced the percentage of compact parking spaces by 15%.
And how would that impact people who park? If, if, if someone who have a, if most of their customer have big car, what impact would that be? Would they, would they park across two, two compact zone then?
Councilman Bowie, if, if people choose to park across two stalls, that's presumably what they would do. The presumption is, is that the stalls are wide enough that even larger vehicles can park in them. So the theory is, is that they would stay within their defined lines per each parking
One of the concern that I have is when I goes, uh, go, uh, to dine or shop at certain area, if, if, my car is not a huge car, it's, it's still reasonably, reasonably small. Uh, it would be extremely difficult to, to park in a compact zone even though it could fit, but it's very difficult. And so a lot of time, I, when I, I drove around, I saw a lot of cars that parked, you know, too close to it and so it would force the, the other car that would not be able to, to park without, you know, being able to open their door. And so they have to circle around, around, around. And, and what, and we end up with is we have a compact car that park in a full-size stall and that would create a lot of issue with parking. Have, have those issue being mitigated here in this, in this traffic plan?
I, I can't see that, that they're being mitigated other than, uh, in our parking stall dimensions. We do require an eight and a half, uh, wide parking stall for a compact space and for most cars that does work. Certainly, large pickup trucks, large SUVs, it, it, it does poses a tight parking space. But we found that an eight and a half is a, is a good dimension for most parking, parking most cars in the shopping center.
Okay. Second, and, and the dimension here is eight and a half for compact?
Eight and a half wide for compact and it's nine feet wide for a full-size parking stall.
Second question is, in, in this plan, they say that they will have, they will mitigate some additional parking issue by valet parking. Do they have, do they indicate how they're going to do the valet parking? Will the people just, just take the car and, and, and drive and park along the street or, or how do they do it? Where would they park?
Well, the, the valet, uh, the valet company typically, uh, they usually hire valet company and they take care of staging the cars as they see the most efficient way to get as many cars on the property. Because they control how the cars are parked and that they don't necessarily pay attention to the traditional parking stalls that, that you and I would park and if we were to go visit, they would normally park the cars closer together and, and tighter so they could get more cars on the site. So, uh, when we've seen the application of a valet system, uh, it really usually generates more parking on the site than what the standard parking lot layout would generate. And that, that's the, the upside to having a valet system because they will control the parking, they'll control where the cars are parked and, um, get more cars on the site.
So they will, they will park the car in, within the premise? They're not going to take the car and park along the streets or in some other neighborhood or some other shopping?
The, the, the purpose of ten is to park the, in this case, is park the cars on the Office Depot property itself. They would not be taking a parking in the neighborhood or some other location. They would be parking on the site.
So, so that would require them to park in the Costco parking?
No, the intent is that they'd be parking, uh, the part of the plan is to park behind of the Office Building, Office Depot Building.
Okay.
Stage the parking back there.
Now, if that is okay, then they are still short by, um, close to 20%, right? 19.8%?
Under the second proposal, yes.
So, so how do we mitigate that? We still short by, by, by close to 20% even with the valet parking, is that correct?
That is correct. However, the presumption is that with the valet and the coordination of the parking that they would be able to overcome that deficit. It's possible that they would not experience a problem, um, based on our operation, based on the size of the restaurant and that.
Can you articulate, uh, how would they overcome that with the valet parking?
Well, again, the, the valet parking would control the parking arrangement, they would be able to park more cars on the site. Unfortunately, I couldn't tell you the exact number of difference from what, uh, they're deficient to what they would actually wind up with, uh, based on the valet system. I would, I would presume that an actual traffic engineer would have to, uh, provide that assessment.
Right, right. I, I, I still quite don't understand and I'm sorry to keep asking you, but, but I'm still find it so difficult, right? We have only that many parking stall now and we, we are missing quite a lot. We are missing 20%. With the valet parking, it'll be easier because they, they, they will park the compact in the compact and park it correctly so that it doesn't take two stall. That I understand. But if we, we still short many parking with the valet parking that still have to park the car inside, in that premise, how, where are the stall to park? I can only fit how many car into how many stall.
Well, again, with the valet-
With valet or no valet?
Uh, if I, if I could track that. They would not necessarily park per the parking lot plan. They would just start stacking the cars side by side closer together and in the areas where there's no designated parking, uh, spaces, they, they would basically put them where they, they can stack them as tightly as they can because they're controlling the parking as it's coming and going with the people coming to, uh, the particular site. They're, they're, they're in essence kind of ignoring the defined parking lot because they're parking the cars as a way that they can best efficiently put them on the site.
Can that create a, uh, a problem when we have an emergency because we don't have enough passes to go through that quickly? I, I seen those valet parking in, in, in LA, Lao Tao. If we allow that here, we need to concern with emergency escape route and if, if there's...
I would presume that they would keep an aisle clear on their arrangement, however, being that they'd be parking at the back where there's not a through circulation, uh, they certainly would not be blocking the through aisles between the two properties and, and any emergency designated, uh, alley or, or driver lane. So if there was an emergency delineated lane, they would not be able to park there to possibly create a parking or, or emergency problem.
So from planning perspective, we are confident that with the valet parking, we can solve the parking shortage without impacting the business next, you know, next door.
Under the plan that's proposed, that is correct.
Other colleagues?
My primary concern would be the fact that we have three parties in this round robin here and two of them are against the, the variants. And, um, you know, I appreciate how much effort has been gone through to get through planning and all of that to get to this point. I would hate for the parties to start over again, but based on what Mr. Hennessy said and Del Taco said, they're not even willing to talk or to conversate about a variance. So I don't think a continuance here in this case would really solve our issue even if we put it out to January. So because in my opinion, two of the three are not playing, um, I would recommend that we go with option one, just to overrule what the planning commission did.
I'll take that as a motion. Is there a second?
I second it.
Any further discussion?
Just clarification. The, the motion would, pardon me, the motion would be to approve the appeal submitted by the Mike Hennessy group and overturn the planning commission's decision.
That's correct. Please vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawn?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Jones?
Yes.
And Mayor Nguyen?
Aye.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, so we have item eight. We had a vacancy due to Mr. Joe Pack and I have a person named, this is, uh, the mayor's nomination and I'm happy to bring forward Julie Voe to approve her to be the next planning commissioner to fill the vacancy.
Can we, when, when we originally did this, you came up with a system that was a little more democratic?
Can, can I hear?
What's that?
Can you speak up? I cannot hear.
Oh, sorry about that, yeah. When we originally did, um, appointments originally when, um, things changed over, we, you had something that was a little more democratic where we each kind of put in names and ranked and sort of had some input in terms of who was there.
Yeah, it's, it's very democratic, so based on your folks that you've brought forward, they've been appointed and this is my appointment, you know, it's very democratic. I've been voted, uh, as mayor. That's the city policy as well and that's who I'm bringing forward.
Just a point of clarification, Mayor.
Sure.
So, yeah, I clearly understand the mayor makes the appointments or the nomination, but the council does approve on this and I'm-
Yes.
Referring to what Mayor Protam Jones said, I think a democratic process or allowing input on who we would suggest to the mayor as his suggested appointment or nominee, I think that would be appropriate. In fact, you made appointment, you may, offered up a name right now, looking through the qualifications. We just had a speaker at the beginning mention about experience. I'd like to hone in on that. This person, no reflection on the person, I, I saw the application. I'm more inclined or in favor to, to look at, uh, people who have experience on commissions, who have been in the city for a long time, beyond six years, and we have those people. I'll just name some of them. George Bridigum is included, Gary Lazenby or Mike Silva. Uh, I think they have the qualifications. I think they are the people, uh, that we will look for the next year. That's the, probably the time period for this appointment. So I'd like to offer up those names as suggestions as nominees. Again, um, you can, you can nominate whoever you want. We have to prove it as a council-
Sure.
-in democratic process, but based on experience, I would like to put those names forward. And if not those people, I, I see new, uh, potentially people with, looking at just the resumes and application process. Jeremy Lehman looks well qualified to take on this assignment as planning commission's very technical commission, takes a lot of time and, 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 and people with existing experience could be a tremendous value starting off on that commission, especially with the issues we had tonight. They can look into that and delve into the details, know what a variance is, know what kind of findings are needed in a planning commission. So I would like to offer up those people and those names in lieu of Julie Voe as a, as a nominee.
Thank you, Mr. Beard.
Being in planning commission for four years, I can't speak from my experience that, uh, that is a very challenging position.
Yeah.
And oftentimes, the, the planning commission make, uh, a lot of difficulty, difficult and complex decisions. Even some of the decisions that they, that they decide aren't, I think that, that sometimes isn't very important for our city and yet doesn't come in front of the city council. Take, for example, the, the Del Taco and the, you know, East Buffet Restaurant. It would not come to the city council for, uh, guidance and decision had it not been for Del Taco and Costco to appeal. And a lot of time when they make that decision, the, uh, the other party that are hurt by their decision may feel that it is too costly to, to appeal to the city and so, and so it would never have a chance for us to, to look into that and reverse the city council, not, not the city council, but the planning commission decision. So, so I think it's very important that we appoint, uh, you know, seasoned and experienced people in the, uh, planning commission. Now, one other fact that I think we need to be, uh, uh, extra cautious this time, we have a very fresh new, uh, planning commission. Most of the, the member of the planning commission are new as opposed to in the previous planning commission, uh, we have a mix. We have, you know, about half of, of veteran commissioner and half fresh. These years, they are totally new. And, and so I think it's very important that when we have a vacancy, we would appoint someone that, that have experience, that have been, uh, uh, you know, in the planning commission before, uh, so that they can, uh, they can guide the other junior members. And, and with that, I would echo Councilman Chris Beard that, that I think we have three distinguished, uh, uh, former commissioner here, George, uh, Prattingham, Gary Lazenby, who was also former chairman of the planning commission, and Michael Silva. We are fortunate that, that they are interested and then, and they are applied for this, uh, opening. So I, I, I would suggest the mayor to reconsider your appointment and draw from those three.
Thank you.
I, I would concur with what both you said and just point out that Councilmember Beard actually pointed out four names and I think I would be okay with any of those four. And maybe as a suggestion, we could do a kind of a ranking, like each of us rank those four in order of how we would pick it and submit and kind of see what the points come out as.
You know, at, at this point, you know, you did bring up your names, your folks for the appointments. Those are the folks that I, that we appointed together. You know, your nominations have been appointed. Mr. Bowie, when you're saying that folks are new to the commission, those are names that we all agreed on as well. So this is also about service. The person that I'm bringing forward, Julie Voe, is highly qualified. She has read the general plan for our city. She is a grant writer. She is a good reader, someone who's careful, someone who knows our city and that's what we need. So that's what I'm bringing forward. I mean, I, I don't, I don't get why we're going at this right now because the fact of the matter is, the folks that are currently on a planning commission have been brought forward by all of us and you each had your own person as well. So that was the process and that was opened up this year with me as the new mayor. And that was not done before, to be clear. Is that correct? I mean, and, and our city code, I mean, this is one of the things that the mayor gets to do. So I, why, why, why are we doing this at this point?
Just comment, response back to that?
Sure.
Yeah, I think we're all looking for the most qualified person we can. It's not who my appointment is, who's a better appointment. I think overall, my, my intent is to have what I consider the most qualified or capable. Experience counts for that a lot. Uh, this is no reflection on Julie, the person you mentioned, um, probably very capable, but she's lived in the city six years. She doesn't have any commission experience. She doesn't have a planning commission experience. She, she may have read the general plan. This is no reflection on her as a person or her capabilities. In time, she could probably fulfill the duties and obligations of a planning commissioner. Again, I'm looking at the most qualified people and I think these people we listed have the experience to be considered the top candidates for being on the planning commission. And again, it is a nomination process which the mayor brings forward. It's not the privilege of the mayor to select everybody. It's the council's decision through a majority process to select the people we feel are most qualified. I think we're adding our input, I'm adding my input to you right now for these reasons that I think these people are more qualified at this stage than the person you presented thus far.
So just to clarify, the mayor nominates the person, however, the full council votes to approve? to approve
That's right.
this person, is that correct? Okay.
City attorney?
Is that right, city attorney?
Yes, the mayor nominates, but the appointment has to be by majority vote of the city council.
Okay. So why don't we just go ahead with your nomination, Mayor, and if it passes, great. If not, then let's go down the list of the other four names that Councilman Beard mentioned, and whoever receives the majority vote gets to be on the commission.
At this time, I'm, I'm not going to bring forward a name, and there will be no motion.
Why is that?
Because that's, I, I brought forward a name, and there's a lot of resistance right now, and I want to reevaluate
Okay.
the folks. That's there, so we're gonna move on. Item nine.
Item nine was a consideration for approval of a proposal from the Tran Hung Dao Foundation, allowing them to conduct the 2016 Ted Festival at Garden Grove Park, and Kim Hoy is here to discuss the yellow that was provided to you regarding the letter.
Thank you. Mayors and city council, as the clerk mentioned to you, we did have a proposal tonight to conduct a 2016 festival. However, this morning, staff received a letter from the president of the Tran Hung Dao Foundation on behalf of both groups asking that they withdraw their application. They just cited reasons that due to the lateness, that there just aren't enough, isn't enough time to be able to do sufficient fundraising to gain sponsorships, and they're very concerned about the weather. So for this year, they've asked to withdraw their proposal.
And we do see that. Okay. No action will be taken there. Looks like we will not have a Ted Festival this year, or 2016 in the city of Garden Grove.
That's correct. Colleague and council, when I learned about, when I was informed about the withdrawal by the, this morning, I then talked to the student unions and cap, explore with them, you know, why they did not apply, and, and also would they still entertain applying, you know, you know, thinking about organizing a Ted Festival in Garden Grove as opposed to the Orange County Fair. And they told me that the reason that they did not apply was because the 75,000 deposit, and to them, they thought that just a deposit would be 75,000, and so the actual cost probably would be much higher, and that's why they were shy from applying. I told them that, no, the reason that we asked for a 75,000 deposit was because we don't want, for any reason, whether or whatever, that if they are not profitable, they won't pay for the amount that they owe us. That's why they asked for the full deposit, or close to a full deposit upfront. And when they learned about that, they, they was, indicated to me that they would, you know, consider the possibility of, you know, doing the Ted Festival, you know, in, in our city, and they would, they would love to sit down and explore that possibility with, with us. Having said that, I think it's, it's up to the city council to say whether we want staff to call them and see if, if they want to sit down for an hour to discuss it, and if it's, it seemed possible, then we, we would consider it. If not, then we just let it go. Would you entertain that, or what's your thought?
You know, the UVSA group has already signed a contract with the Orange County Fair.
No, they have not.
Yes, they have. I actually have a copy. I serve on the Orange County Fair Board.
Okay, all right. Because I, the, the, one of the organizer I talked to at about one o'clock today confirmed that they, they, from his understanding, they did not have that sign. So maybe he, he did not aware of it.
Yeah, that must be the case.
Okay, then, then let, let close it then.
Okay. But we do appreciate, you know, the interest, and hopefully in the future, folks will, maybe we can do the, the request for proposals a lot earlier and, and see, you know, what's out there. Ms. Hoy?
We could certainly do that. I mean, we could maybe start the process in the spring or into the winter, so they'd have almost a full year to gain sponsorships and fundraise. We could do that.
Great. So, yeah, this, this is another treasured tradition in the city of Garden Grove, and it's, it's sad that we won't have a Ted celebration for 2016, but there are others not far away, and I, I wish, you know, them very much success as well. Okay. Item ten?
Item ten A is the second reading and adoption of the municipal code amendment number A 14 2015 regarding an amendment to Title IX to update the references, definitions, development standards, and operational conditions pertaining to massage establishments and other types of uses that provide massage services. This is ordinance number 2861. It's for second reading and adoption by title only entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Approving Amendment Number A 14 2015, a zoning text amendment to portions of chapters nine, four, nine sixteen, and nine eighteen of Title IX of the Garden Grove Municipal Code pertaining to massage establishments and other uses at which massage services are provided."
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
Move approval.
Second it.
Please vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawn?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones?
Yes.
And Mayor Nguyen?
Yes. Ten B.
Ten B is amendment to chapter eight seventy of the Garden Grove Municipal Code relating to guest registers at public lodging facilities. This is ordinance number 2862 for second reading and adoption by title only entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Amending Sections Eight Seventy Thirty and Eight Seventy Forty, Chapter Eight Seventy of Title Eight of the Garden Grove Municipal Code relating to guest registers at public lodging facilities."
Same motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Please vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawn?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones?
Yes.
And Mayor Nguyen?
Yes. Eleven eight. Mr. Stiles.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is to follow up on the request of council to bring you a update on the process for establishment of a by district election system that we entered into in a stipulated agreement with the court system. So last week, the law director, Omar Sandoval, deputy city manager, Maria Stipe, and I got a chance to have a first introductory meeting with David Ely. David is the demographer that we have entered into a contract with, with Compass Demographics, who will be leading our community engagement process, and then working with the community and city council to establish the district system that we will be going to at the end of next year. We wanted Mr. Ely to be here tonight. He was engaged in similar discussions, had commitments, he's with some work he's doing with the city of Fullerton, but we will have him here in two weeks to, at a study session, to outline what the process is for the community that someone like he goes through when he does this work with its, with a community to establish, establish district boundaries. I have to say that he will be engaging in a very robust process with the community that's gonna go on for two or three months. And let me just talk about a couple of the key steps that he is going to be going through, just for the community that's listening, for all of you and for all of the city staff. So we have already begun the process of sending and downloading, downloading information to him about, helping him build his database of knowledge that he's gonna need to begin his work. That includes gathering geographic, population census data, voting information, all of that. Beginning at the end of November and the first week in December, he will begin what he calls informational, individual informational meetings, where he will basically set up the entire week here, likely in offices in, in city hall, and he will schedule meetings with anyone and, and everyone who wants to meet with him throughout that entire week to talk to him about what their concerns are, what their hopes are, where they want to see this process go, what their suggestions are. It will go on, he'll be, he'll have slots open from 10 a.m. to 9 p.m. every day for the entire week with anyone and everyone that wants to schedule meetings with him. The goal is to help him, you know, share with people kind of what his process is besides what he's just going to be talking to us about in two weeks. And then, after he spends that entire week doing that, he will schedule, we think, we're, we're tentatively scheduling at least three public informational meetings where we'll go out to different parts of the community in three sessions, primarily during the middle of December, to kind of talk about what his process is, again, gather citizen input in a community-based meeting, talking about what the mapping process is, and providing information for citizens about what he's gonna be doing. And that's gonna be important, because after he goes through that process of all these individual meetings he's gonna do for the entire week, all the public informational meetings that he's gonna have, he will then come back to city council, in a city council meeting, on or about the middle of January, and he'll report back to all of you and to all of the committee about what some of the thinking that he's done, what some of the input he's gotten from citizens, what some of the proposals he's thinking of might look like, and share those with the community. Now, following that, and he will, obviously, it'll be a chance when he comes back here before council to get input from all of you about what you think about the process so far, comments that you want to make, and certainly, as elected leaders here, just as any other citizen in those very first week of individual meetings, you'll be able to schedule your own meeting with the demographer to talk about anything you'd like to talk about as well. That's just the first round of his employee engagement that he's going to do. So he'll go through all those activities, report back to you, and then becomes what we think is probably where, you know, people will get really interested in his discussion. So he's going to have another entire round of individual meetings, again, for an entire week, meeting with people, and at that point, he'll start talking about what some of his thoughts are, what some of the boundary map proposals might look like, again, trying to receive citizen input about some of those proposals. And then we're going to have another four citizen engagement public meetings throughout the city of Garden Grove, where at that point, he will be, begin to discuss and display some different district map proposals that the citizens can react to and look at, and the community can react to. So it won't be just one proposal where lines should be drawn, where they shouldn't be drawn. He envisions having probably a series of different proposals for people to react to, talk about, and give comment on. That would, we think that would, we're tentatively scheduling that work to happen during the first and second weeks of March. And then finally, sometime, we're tentatively scheduling March 22nd, he would need to come back to council with a final report on what his recommendation or recommendations are for what the district boundary should look like. Now, we're going to be, this is all, you know, we're working right now on creating, on our webpage, a pretty, a very intensive list of when all these meetings will occur, having them in various languages for people to see and evaluate and understand what the process is. And then, as the law director, I think, has advised us, we will need, the council will need to have approval on the districts no later than the first of April, I believe, is the schedule that we will be targeting, because by then, candidates will have to decide, you know, where the, you know, filing procedures and things like that. We are going to be, so, so that's a little update on what the process is, what we're gonna be engaged in, and again, in two weeks, we will have Mr. Ely here for a study session to talk more extensively about all of this. So we wanted to give you a little preview about our, just our very preliminary meeting at the end of last week, and then what's to come.
Great, thank you, Mr. Stiles. You know, I, I'd really appreciate that in a press release, and then translate it into Spanish, and also Korean, and Vietnamese, and also the date of when Mr. Ely will be here, and time, and inviting the press and the community to join, and just give him a heads up, because this is good for us to know, but you know, most people probably don't watch city council meetings, especially at the late end of the city council meeting. So, like, is it possible that we have that, Mr. Stiles? The press release in the different languages
Yes.
of your report?
Yes, absolutely.
Great, thank you. All right. So are there other matters from council? I, I have one, and I want to bring back the issue of our acting city attorney, and that is, we, you know, had some time to think about it. We haven't resolved this yet. This is something that, you know, last time, there, Mr. Fan had some reservations and about possibly some kind of campaign promises and whatnot. I know for me, I didn't make any campaign promises whatsoever, but I think it's very important that our city goes ahead and opens up the process as we do for all city services for bids, especially when we haven't had a change at all in twenty, over twenty years for our city attorney services. And this does not mean that we would deny the current firm from applying and being in the process. We do need to see, and we do need to compare, and that's just for the public benefit and for the public good. So I, I'd like to move, to give direction to staff to move forward and, and bring back the RFP and what that would look like before we actually issue it. I know, Mr. Bowie, you spoke last time very adamantly about this as well. I'm hoping that you would second this.
Well, I, I, that's certainly my, my position, that we want to, to be fair and, and have opportunity for, for other firm to, you know, propose their services as well as the current firm. I, I, you know, as a owner of a, of an IT company that usually go out to, for government bid, I, I think that is, is the right thing to do. However, I, at this point, I don't see if, I do not see whether the condition have changed that may worthwhile to, to discuss it at this point. I would, certainly would consider that in, in the near future, you know, once we think that, that there may be, you know, opportunity for, for this council to, to hear. Today, I don't see, I do not want another unfruitful discussion of this issue. So that's why I, I was hesitant to, to second it.
Okay. What, what has changed?
Nothing changed.
Okay.
If, if we, if we, I, I do not just want to bring back an issue and keep betting on it without the possibility of, of successful. So that's why I don't want, I, you know, I don't want to.
Yeah, sure. We, we do have to resolve this. You know, we currently still have an acting city attorney, and it's been over twenty years. I'm just bringing it back again for reconsideration. I entertain a motion or a second from any of my colleagues at this time. Okay? All right. Any other matters? Mr. Stiles?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I just want to reiterate some earlier comments that were made about, that, that you approved earlier about our Open Gov initiative. We have been, I, I want to thank all of you for your strategic thinking and having the staff move forward with this. We're excited about it, I'm particularly excited about it. Our staff, particularly in the finance department, community services, IT, have been really working hard to try and get this initiative up, you know, uploaded. I personally feel that the, you know, the, the information that we have belongs to citizens, and we need to get it out there so that they can, so it's available to them. So we are, with the blessing that you've had today of the resolution that you've approved, we've, we've, we're gonna move forward with a press announcement on Thursday, 11 a.m. at the third floor training room in, in city hall, and I know all of you have been invited. at the third floor training room in, in City Hall, and I know all of you have been invited, and some of us will be making remarks. We're gonna have a short video display of what the website is gonna be looking like. And of course, this is, it's a complete work in progress. You know, we have lots of data sets in the city, and we'll be working forward to the best way to populate the fields with information as we go, and it's a, it's an ongoing project, but it's a project going in the right direction, and I think it's the right thing for, for our community, so we're looking forward to that. So thank you for your support.
Great, thank you, Mr. Stiles. You know, we also have the issue that's still on the table that has not been resolved yet, and that is with the Galleria project. There is a demolition order. I keep bringing this up. You know, the public brings it up during election time, but you know, I guarantee you, public, I have not forgotten, this building is there, is an eyesore, and there's been a lack of movement. We've waited long enough. I know we've all expressed urgency at one point, but there is teeth to what we can do as a council. And I'd like to bring that matter back up so that we can take action, we can follow through with the word that we have given, and that is to follow through with the demolition order, because at this point, sorry, folks, we tried, we really did, and we met with folks, and it's not going anywhere. And that building, if you don't want it to go anywhere, then we'll continue to not take action. But if you want that action on that building, then we have to take action. That's the reality. So I'm, I'm gonna move to bring it back on to the agenda that we can follow through with that demolition order. Yes, I do.
Second.
Please vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawn?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones?
Yes.
And Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Thank you. All right, and that, that should be in the open. I think that discussion should be in the open, to not be a closed session thing at all. I think any talk about that moving forward should be out in the open completely. Okay? All right, any other matters?
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
I'll take a moment to wish everyone a very happy Veterans Day. Thank you, and take your time to thank a veteran, to reflect upon what they've done to give this country all of our freedoms. As a veteran myself, you know, we say that, you know, we appreciate what they do, but really, we appreciate what you do for us. Having been deployed on the front lines, it means a lot when we get these care packages, these well wishes. You know, a lot of times, we carry out orders that we have no control over at all, and we thank you for supporting the troops, and not so much just the mission, but the troops and who are on the ground doing the hard work. Along that line, too, this Saturday, there's a very unique event over at the Vietnam War Memorial in Westminster at about 10:00 o'clock in the morning. There're gonna be a combination of both American veterans who served in Vietnam, and also Vietnamese veterans who also fought with the American troops over in Vietnam, to thank them for all that they've done for us. I think those veterans there during that era really didn't get the recognition and the thanks that they deserved. So if you have a moment this Saturday at 10:00 a.m. over at the memorial, please come out and just say thanks for their service. Thank you.
I wanted to say that as well, just to comment. We can't thank our veterans enough, and we want to also recognize the people in active service, all the military personnel, all those in harm's way, we wish them God's, all the best, and remember, if you have to, tomorrow, I'll remember the reason for the day.
Bowie?
Yes, I would like to echo with my colleagues. I'm sure all of us appreciate the sacrifice that the veterans have endured for us. You know, I, as the Veteran Day's approach, I reflect back on those days when I was in, just a teenage boy, and, you know, the American soldiers fought very bravely, defending freedom for South Vietnam people, and, and we truly appreciate it. 50,000 people made their ultimate sacrifice, 100,000 wounded, and the same thing go with the Vietnamese veterans. 100,000 people die, you know, million more, you know, endure great sacrifice when they, after the war, they are in prison, in reeducation camps, serving for five years, although for more than 20 years. I reflect back, and I have a heartfelt appreciation for their sacrifice. You know, when the Civil War in the United, the United States ended, those, the North and the South, the North did not imprison the South veterans, but it did happen in, in Vietnam. And today, you know, as I reflect back, you know, I would like to express my deep appreciation for, for our veterans. We owe them their life, their sacrifice, but not only that, we think being a soldier is difficult, being family of the soldiers are a lot more difficult. You know, how many mothers, you know, have to shed a tear when someone knock on their door and announcing that their son or their daughter just passed away? It's very difficult. Those who die, you know, die in peace, go away in peace, but those who remain have to bear that, that difficult, that hardship for many, many years. And so today, I would like to express my deep appreciation for our veterans, as well as for the family. We deeply owe, you know, indebted to your, to their sacrifice.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you. Just want to say Happy Veterans Day, and wholehearted thank you to all the brave men and women who have served our country.
All right. Everybody, have a great Veterans Day tomorrow. There's a Veterans Day celebration at the Orange County Fairgrounds as well, open to the public, it's free parking. I believe that there will be some unique commemorations there, and, you know, last year, Tibor Rubin was also celebrated there, having fought in world wars. And, you know, Veterans Day is on November 11th, and it was initially Armistice Day, because war is the last resort. There's, there's nothing that should be really glorified there. And the reason why is 1111, 1111, and that armistice was supposed to be signed at 1:00, so that that would be the only war. But unfortunately, we continue to have wars, and war should be the last resort, and when our men and women are sent off, we want them to come home safe. And when we want them to come home safe, we want them also to have the best treatment. And unfortunately, we haven't treated our veterans very well in the past, and we've learned from it, and I think it's really important that we do honor our veterans by providing those services to our men and women who have served. So God bless you, and God bless America.
Mayor Nguyen?
Oh, I'm sorry, is there something else?
Yes, there is. There's more business to take care of.
Oh, closed session.
Closed session.
Closed session.
And I believe the attorney wants to call for...